Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, February 10th, 2015. We begin our meeting with a planning commission roll call.
Chair Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sosin.
Here.
Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Jordison.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Very good. Next, we'll have a report of members, starting with Commissioner Tisdale.
Nothing to report.
No report.
No report.
No report either.
One thing that I would like to draw to everyone's attention is there's been an announcement of upcoming short course on local planning. It was in your packet of materials. That's going to be held on Monday, April 6th, up in Stanwood. And it's in the evening, 6:15 to 9:15. And I just wanted to recommend this course. I've taken it in the past, and I think it's particularly helpful with us doing the update of the comprehensive plan. So encourage you to be involved with that. As well as I did want to let you know that the American Planning Association is going to have their national conference in Seattle in April. That's in mid-April. And I'm sure some of us will be planning on going to that. So I'm hoping to attend. So I'll bring information back to the group after that. So that's my report. Does staff have any report for this evening?
Just a reminder, this is Alan Giffen, planning staff. Of your commission meeting next Tuesday night, it'll be a public workshop on comprehensive plans, several elements of the comprehensive plan, including the housing element and capital facilities element.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, typically, we would be approving, reviewing and approving the meeting minutes from our prior meeting. But since we're having this accelerated schedule of meetings each week, we didn't have time to get the meeting agenda or the meeting minutes prepared in time to put it on the agenda with confidence. It has been distributed, but I think we'll go ahead and hold deliberation on those meeting minutes from last week until next week's meeting. And then I did want to mention that in terms of citizen comments, we do have three items on our agenda for tonight, and they're listed as public workshops, which means members of the public will have an opportunity to speak on any of these three items. And the agendas are available on the table, if you're wondering what those are. But we do have a chance, right at the beginning of tonight's meeting, if anybody has something that they would like to talk about with the planning commission that does not relate to these three items, now's a chance to step up to the podium and address us. So does anybody have comments? Okay. So our first item for tonight is a public workshop on the I-502 recreational marijuana business land use regulations. And I wanted to just say just a couple of things about this. This is described as a public workshop, and what that means is the purpose of this workshop before our planning commission, we're an advisory body to the city council, is it's a chance for you as a public to share information with us, as well as the planning commission to ask questions of staff and learn more about the particular issue, as well as providing, we can provide opportunity to give feedback to staff as they're preparing materials, and in this case, it would be the regulations on this item. And there will be future public hearings on all of these topics that tonight are public workshops. We'll have public hearings, and then at that time, the planning commission will make a decision and come up with recommendations that will be forwarded to the city council. So we are not making any decisions tonight on any of these items. We're just gathering information, just so you know that. Okay. So I'll now turn it over to our planning director, Alan Giffen.
Thank you, Alan Giffen, planning director. And tonight, as Chairman Stewart, Chairperson Stewart described, a public workshop on our I-502 recreational marijuana business land use regulations. And I'll just run through a quick PowerPoint here that covers most of the material that we put in the staff memo. There are also some attachments to the packet, variety of different background information pieces. But the purpose of the public workshop, and this one and future workshops on this topic, is to carry out the work program that is required in the ordinance that adopted our interim I-502 land use regulations for recreational marijuana businesses. And that, and I'll cover that in just a moment, the details of that work program. It's also an educational process for the commission, public, staff to learn more about potential changes to the city's interim regulations. We want to hear from the public about any concerns, impacts, and potential changes that people are suggesting about our interim regulations. As mentioned, no decisions will be made tonight. We'll have additional workshops and hearings in the future. The work program in the ordinance that city council adopted with the interim land use regulations directs staff to monitor the impacts of both retail and production and processing uses within the city and in other jurisdictions, as that information is available, to monitor potential legislative changes that may come out of the state legislature, monitor legal decisions that are applicable, maybe comparable situations for Everett, and to determine if any revisions to the interim regulations are necessary. The legislature does have several bills in front of them at this time. Probably hear more about a few of those tonight, but not from staff. One of the challenges that cities are facing in counties is that we're not getting any of the revenues that are generated from the I-502 businesses. And that was something that cities and counties were expecting when the initiative was passed, that there would be a revenue stream to help with the monitoring and enforcement of local regulations related to I-502 businesses. There's also a proposal for medical marijuana, which is much less regulated than the I-502 recreational marijuana, to either bring those statutes into, under the same umbrella of the Washington State Liquor Control Board, or to provide a more regulated system than currently exists to date. And if that were to occur, where both medical marijuana and I-502 retail stores were to be regulated under the state liquor control board system, there's a potential that it might change the number of permitted retail stores. We don't have any details on any such proposal, but that's some speculation that we've heard that should the two different types of marijuana sales be combined in the same regulatory system, there probably would be a look at increasing the number of stores that are allowed in jurisdictions. So under the state I-502 regulations for recreational marijuana, the Liquor Control Board established some very detailed regulations that govern how production, processing, and retail uses are to operate. They have established a minimum 1,000-foot separation from what they describe as sensitive land uses, which are defined as schools, parks, recreation centers, childcare centers, public transit centers, libraries, or game arcades. And so with, even if Everett did not add any additional regulations, those separation requirements are established under the Liquor Control Board statutes. The Liquor Control Board also determined that up to five retail stores would be permitted in Everett. There is no limit on the number of production or processing facilities that are allowed. There are three tiers of production facilities under the state law. The tier one, which is what the only size that Everett allows under the interim regulations, would allow for up to a 2,000-square-foot plant canopy. Tier two and three are larger with 10,000-square-foot and 30,000-square-foot canopies allowed respectively, in the tier two and the tier three, which again, we don't allow under interim regulations. So under our city land use regulations, medical marijuana stores are not allowed. We do regulate the medical marijuana system with collective gardens, which are permitted in industrial zones, but not in retail zones. And so, but medical marijuana dispensaries are not permitted under that set of statutes. Under the I-502 regulations, which for the city's interim regulations that expire in July, we do allow for retail marijuana sales in most zones that allow retail uses. There are a couple of exceptions, which I'll get to in a moment. There's a minimum 2,500-foot separation requirement between retail uses, so there can't be a clustering or several stores located in the same neighborhood. Retail sales, and this is some recent amendments that were passed by the city council just last month, retail stores are not allowed on lots that have residential use, or abutting lots that have residential use, with a couple of exceptions. The city's regulations do allow for the tier one production and processing in industrial zones and in the A1 agricultural zone. In the A, excuse me, for all of the production and processing facilities, there is a minimum 1,000-foot separation requirement for any residentially zoned property. Three retail stores do exist in Everett. There are a couple of others that are, one is licensed, but it's in a location that the city's regulations do not allow it. And one is, I believe, has its permits for remodeling a retail store and probably will be getting a, it's, excuse me, its state license in the very near future. And at this time, we don't have any I-502 production or processing facilities in Everett. The recently approved amendments related to retail stores the city council passed last month took our previous regulations and added some detail to them. They do not allow for a retail establishment if that establishment only has access from an alley rather than from the furnished street. And so that was in addition to the ordinance last month. Marijuana retailers are not allowed on any parcel containing residential use, or on a lot contiguous to a parcel with residential use unless there's a physical separation between the two uses. So for example, a good change in topography where one is hardly visible from the other is not impacted by the other. If it's located in a shopping center as one of multiple uses, then that would be an exception. If the retail faces a commercial street on one side of the parcel and a residential were to face a residential street in the opposite direction, that's another situation where they could be on the same parcel or on a budding parcels. Or if there's at least a 100-foot separation between the two uses, those are exceptions to the rule about being on the same or a contiguous parcel. So some of the concerns when we were first drafting the interim regulations had to do with what kind of odor impacts a production or processing facility may create on residential areas, and so that's why the 1,000-foot separation was put in place. Obviously, there were, since this is a new type of a use, there was no data to suggest what type of impacts, crime-related impacts there might be from retail or production processing uses. And so that's one of the things that we are monitoring, well, we're working with the police department as they monitor those types of impacts. Public safety, related to how people use the product that they purchase at a retail store, and there's regulations that prohibit consumption or use of marijuana on the premises where you can purchase it. Concerns about what impacts would be on property values, and just the difference between the two systems in the state, the medical and the recreational. And then just generally, the operational impacts of any type of industrial or retail business that you might expect, whether that was a marijuana business or another type of business, such as traffic, aesthetics, parking noise, and security issues and so forth. Those are some of the concerns that have been expressed, and from what we are looking at in the experience of other cities, just, again, in Washington, there's not a whole lot of information for us to be able to conclusively say what the impacts of I-502 businesses are on those topics that I was just covered. I will mention that as far as odor is concerned, that is regulated by the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency. They do have requirements for containing odors, and typically, that requires a mechanical HVAC-type system to filter the air that is produced within, and the odor that's produced within a production facility. And there's a permit system that is required, the permit system. They review all of the specific circumstances for production operation and the type of equipment they will use to filter and keep the odor from becoming a nuisance. So that's another regulatory agency dealing with something that's fairly new in their experience. So for potential changes to consider, just questions for the commission as we work on this issue for the next, oh, several months, I would say, before we get to July anyway. Should we allow tier three and tier two production and processing facilities? Is the 1,000-foot buffer between production and processing facilities and residential zones too large, adequate? Should that be reduced or maintained? Should we prohibit production in the A1 zones? Most of our A1 agricultural zoning is in the floodplain, so buildings are not allowed in the floodplain. One of the things that the Liquor Control Board has established for outdoor production processes is a requirement for an eight-foot security fence, which may, in a floodplain, become something that, in a flood event, would collect debris that washes down in a flood and exacerbate flooding. So the question is, should we allow for outdoor type of production in the A1 zones, in those floodplain areas, not for marijuana-related impacts, but for floodplain impacts? The C2 ES zone, which is the Everett Station area, is a zone that, when we were writing the regulations, we did not include as the zone that allows for retail sale of marijuana. We don't allow it in the B1, which is also a business zone that does allow for neighborhood-scale type retail uses. But in the C2 zone, which is what the area was zoned before, it was, the Everett Station was, it was rezoned to include the Everett Station zoning, new standards, that C2 zoning does allow for retail uses. And so we do have one license that has been issued by the state for property located in the C2 ES zone. However, the city cannot issue a business license because our zoning doesn't allow for that use in the Everett Station area zoning. And so that's another question that we may have somebody in attendance tonight who we've been in contact with, the licensed applicant for that location. Are there other revisions that are necessary for retail uses, or other things that I haven't covered here that we'll hear about tonight or during this process that should be considered as we look to make changes to our interim regulations? So tonight is about what the community wants to say, what kind of questions you may have for staff and people who will testify tonight, so that we can just be developing a base of information as we move forward and consider changes to our regulations. This map does show the Everett Station area zoning, which I'll drag the cursor around it, just below Hewitt Avenue on the north, runs all the way over to I-5 on the east, down to 36th Street on the south, and almost to Broadway. The alley between McDougal and Broadway is the Westerly boundary. This is the only area in the city with the Everett Station zoning. And so we do have a location at 3223 where an applicant would like to open a retail business. That business has already, that license has been issued by the state, but the city will not issue a business license unless that regulation has changed under our non-interim replacement regulations. So this is a public workshop. We did include a lot of information in your packet that I'm not going to cover tonight, but some more reading material for you. We did receive quite a bit of email correspondence. I think most of that's been provided to you today. We are going to hear next a presentation by Jamie Curtis Smith, who's an industry advocate who has been attending a lot of the planning commission and public meetings with the city council and asking for this kind of a process. And so she's prepared a presentation of about 15 minutes that will follow mine. And we'll encourage you to take public comments tonight, and any questions that you have, things that we need to think about, or additional information needed at future workshop meetings, please feel free to tell us what your concerns or comments are. And potentially want to look at a next date for a workshop, a month from tonight, March 10th. I don't know if that will work for commissioners, but something for you to consider either now, or let us know when you know what your availability for March 10th may be, and if you're willing to hold a third meeting in March, as well as you did this month. So not asking for an answer on that question at this point, but for you to consider. So these are just the same questions I had up a moment ago. I'll minimize this, and unless you have questions for me at this point, I would invite Jamie up to come make her presentation.
Do any of the planning commissioners have questions for Director? Yes.
With regard to the retail businesses that are currently open, have there been any citations that have been, or notices that have been sent out for violations of any zoning codes at this point? And then second question, I know we have a production facility, tier three, about 128th Street down south. Any data or anything from that in terms of impacts that the city's received at this point?
I'll take the questions in the order that they were asked. The first question was about any violations of zoning regulations at any of the three retail stores that are in operation. The only one I'm aware of is a temporary sign, banner sign violation at one of the retail stores. I don't know of any violations that we've encountered at the other two stores. And as for the tier three production facility south of the city, I'm unaware of any issues concerning complaints or violations there. I do believe that Ms. Curtis Smith can talk about that facility as well in a moment.
Any other questions?
Alan, you spoke about there's not enough data. Colorado has started this process before I-502. Are you, is there the ability to get some data from them on locations and some of the, I mean, we've got a law that we've got to work with, and we don't have enough data to make some of this. So I was just wondering if...
Yeah, that's something that we can do. I think what we'd like to do is probably work with, for example, Association of Washington Cities or other, perhaps even the Liquor Control Board, who compare the, both the regulations and the experiences in Colorado to Washington's own, because the regulations are somewhat different. But it's worth doing that research to find out if we have similar impacts, or if we have more impacts or fewer impacts because of the regulatory systems that are in place either here or there. So that's something that we can look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So now we'll hear a presentation from Jamie Curtis Smith.
My name is Jamie Curtis Smith. I'm a resident of Everett, a mother of six-year-old twins, and a citizen advocate for the legalization of marijuana. Because of my support for the industry, I'm often referred to as the PTA mom of pot. I just, Alan had asked me to give just a little more perspective of the decisions that we're hopefully going to be making as we move into permanent regulations in a few months. Before legalization, Washington was second only to California in the production and distribution of marijuana. At the time, when this chart was made in 2013, we thought there were about 22 million pounds. Of course, we don't know. It's an underground economy. Now we know a lot more, and we're thinking it was probably double, maybe even not triple, triple those numbers. Now despite the fact, as Alan has mentioned, that we do not have one licensed tier producer/processor in the city of Everett, for those of us who live within the city of Everett, we already live within blocks of a major grow operation, as most of our police force will attest to. So what I'd like to do is just have you think about what you think an illegal grow operation looks like, and think about the neighborhoods in which you live in. And I'm wondering if they look like this? Or like this? Or this? Or this? The drive behind legalization is the knowledge that the only way people are going to stop producing and distributing marijuana is when it becomes no longer economically feasible to do so. So what does a legal grow operation look like? Well, it can be grown indoors or out, in rural and agriculturally compatible facilities, and in commercial and light industrial zones. And Commissioner Adams, I just want to point out here, this is the grow operation off of 130 seconds that you're talking about. That's a tier three producer/processor in unincorporated Snohomish County. That operation is Fred Evante. So I can get you more information about them if you'd like. But the competitive advantage that the legal market has over illegal growers is the ability to maximize economy of scale, which the state is clearly not allowing us to do at this point. But each of these facilities represent a different business model that will collectively contribute to the eradication of the black market. Now, as the city considers zoning compatibility to account for the variety of these kinds of operations, I think it's important to remember that the facade of the building is irrelevant to the production and processing of marijuana. The facilities used, as shown in this picture, already have existing building codes that govern what it is they do and how it is that they do it. And the LCB, the Liquor Control Board, that regulates the legalization, the legal industry, then overlays a very complex, where are my notes? Here they are. This is just the start of the LCB regulations, which I consent to you for your entertainment. And before approval from the state, all legal operations need to get the required permits from their local community, or their local planning departments. So it's plumbing, electrical, mechanical, building permits. And these facilities are not open for public use. People are not just going to wander in there and check them out. Now, the idea that these facilities might look like mini prisons has some valid, some valid merit. They, many of them have come from early entrants into the marijuana industry that have outdoor grows where large fences are required. We have eight-foot fences that are required in outdoor operations. Some operators have grown to a six-foot fence, put a two-foot extension on it, and what barbed wire around it to meet the LCB requirements. Now, even though security is required by the Liquor Control Board, this is done primarily through surveillance and entry, surveillance systems and entry protocols. Barbed wire fence is not a requirement of the Liquor Control Board, nor is stadium lighting, nor are ferocious attack dogs. Even signage is heavily restricted by the state. And industry best practices, as they have been and as they will continue to be, is the idea that a well-designed facility is one that you would never know was there. So what's happening now? Of the license, of the 426 licensed producer/processors operating statewide, there are 20... Of the license, of the 426 licensed producer/processors operating statewide, there are 29 currently in operation in Snohomish County, none of which, again, are located within our city limits. So that means that even if we have some sort of revenue sharing that passes between the state, the idea is to share those with cities that actually have operations up and running. Currently, as, as Alan had mentioned, we only have tier one operators that would even be allowed to operate here to begin with. Now, over 90 retailers are open statewide. So out of the 334 lottery winners that you've probably heard a lot about, we do have the five within our city center, or within our city. We have, excuse me, the first to open on September 29th was High Society on 1824 Broadway, and then Kushmart on Evergreen, Purple Haze, south of 41st. Mary J's is scheduled to be open soon on 19th Avenue. And Globodyne, as Alan has mentioned, is, has secured a location in the C2ES and has spoken to this issue. Now, the idea behind legalization was to not only recognize the insatiable market demand of marijuana, but to address those community concerns that we all care about, like limiting access to our children and mitigating the environmental impact of illegal grow operations, and also to address the issue of crime that has proliferated under prohibition. We know that banning does not work. A big challenge we have as a community is recognizing illegal grow operations and making sure that our legal operations are actually abiding by the law. Now, in your commission packets, and I think everybody's got a copy of this, there's a regulatory guidance for licensed I-502 operators. It's 20 some odd pages, and this is just the very high-level overview of all the other 10 to 15 agencies, not the Liquor Control Board, that also regulates this industry. So I'll address some of these other citizen concerns that Alan had talked about, that I know that planning commissioners and council members have been concerned as we look through what a legal operation on the inside looks like. Within your package, on the second page, there's a sheet that looks like this. And that is basically the production and processing language and system in, in Washington right now. So we basically start on the inside of, this is illegal, this is actually multiple legal operations that we have operating in Washington State. We go from some cloning in this area with some, starting to grow out in the vegetative state, and then off to flowering. Now, when, when plants flower, that's when we really start smelling that, the odor that, or the potent smells that some people actually enjoy, the smell of, that has been a concern that I continue to hear over and over again. It's going to smell, we don't want to live next door to it. However, professional indoor growers mitigate these smells by using industrial HVAC systems with huge carbon infiltration systems, which is what they have been using for years, which is why they're growing right next door to us, and we don't know that they're doing that. Now, 502 operators are also required to secure a permit, like Alan had mentioned, from the Puget Sound Air Quality or Clean Air Agency, and that renews annually. And that agency has emissions over all commercial operations. So the bottom line in legalization is if you smell it, somebody's doing something wrong, right? Odor is not going to be an issue in our city in commercial operations. Additionally, any smoking or abiding on any legal operation site is strictly prohibited and still against the law. For chemical operations, 502 operators can only use chemical applications authorized by the Washington State Department of Agriculture, which I believe is somewhere in this package. I believe it's on page 11. And the Liquor Control Board has very strict rules on when and how to apply it. We have lots of record-keeping around that. While additionally overseeing worker safety by adding, by making sure we can abide by all of the LNI safety standards, which is on page six. Additionally, on page 14, you'll see that even waste, disposal for these operations are treated more intensely than any other agricultural industry and are actually starting to be equated to Hanford. That's how intense the regulation is for some of these operations. Now, the flowers after they, they flower, after the plants flower, it goes through a drying and trimming stage where the flowers are cut and dried, then either hand-trimmed, as you're seeing by some of these people at the tables here. Oops, sorry. Sorry, excuse me. Just use the old-fashioned way. You're seeing it some of the tables here. Or machine-trimmed, depending on what the outcome that the producer/processor has wanted for either packaging or processing. Now, within this system, the traceability, a lot of you have probably heard about this tracking system that legal operators have to go through. This goes from seed to sale, which allows the Liquor Control Board to monitor any product, any plant, at any stage of the life cycle, from seed to sale. So to put this into perspective, if I was a winemaker, it would mean that not only would I have to account for every single grape in my operation, I would have to count for every single leaf and every single stem. This is an extremely intense tracking and traceability system, and it is a major component of legalization to adhere to public safety and producer/processor legal operation accountability. Now, the, the next stage in this is the extraction process for those producers who, and processors, actually, who would like to actually extract some of the usable compounds into a concentrate. Now, there are many compounds other than THC in the marijuana plant, and there are definitely different methods for extracting those compounds. But the most common are using water to make bubble hash, and that's actually used in the washing machine. Many operators, this is about the extent of their processing facility, is using water in a washing machine. Another popular method is using CO2 closed-loop extractions, which is a system shown here by Eden Labs. This is the same certified equipment that has been used in the essential oil industry for over 20 years without incident. So mint oils, lavender oils, any of the essential oils use this type of processing. Marijuana uses this exact same equipment. Additionally, there has been a lot of talk about some of these volatile processes using solvent extracts like butane, methane, pentane, and alcohol. Again, these are in certified closed-loop systems that have been used across industry for decades without incident. What is not allowed and what is dangerous is not professionally certified operations with professional operators, and this is the stuff that we see on TV that blows us, that we blow up buildings. It's dangerous and it's unacceptable, and it is very illegal already within 502. Now, the future of this industry far exceeds the pot brownie. So imagine Safeway. Basically, every product within that store can be infused with the secret sauce. So as I mentioned earlier, the competitive advantage that legal operators have is the ability to create extraction and infusion facilities to create brands that consumers can trust. Extraction and infusion is what is going to eradicate the black market. These kinds of processes take, or create, to create these brands require investment, facilities, as you saw, very heavy equipment, and a whole lot of people to make it happen. Those kind of operations are really hard to hide and keep secret. That's the competitive advantage that the legal market has, or the black market. So you would be very shocked and disgusted, in many cases, to know the conditions under what many of the products that we see on the market today are coming to market. And testing is a very important aspect of legalization. Certified businesses use the most sophisticated scientific instrumentation and methodology to provide analytical services that are, to the point where they're almost unprecedented. Legal operators know what they're selling and consumers know what they're buying. And that does not happen in the black market. The black market will continue to prosper of every ban, every moratorium, every land use regulation, and every additional restriction that we put on these operators. So with that said, I can talk about this for a long, long time with a lot of passion, but I'd love to answer any questions that the commission has.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions at this point in time? Yes, Commissioner Adams?
Can you tell us a little bit more about, one of the things we talked about the last time we were talking about the interim ordinance was the production facility, production facility at 132nd, I think you said it was, in South Everett. Odors, data, any information, complaints from neighbors that you've heard of?
So we did put in in November, we put in a public request for this Snohomish County to find out which operators, because we heard, you know, there are all these complaints and what's going on now. Within Snohomish County, like I said, we've got 29 operators that are fully functional, are fully operational and up and running by the Liquor Control Board. That's out of about 116 that have intended to do business within Snohomish County. When people started coming forward and saying, what about the children? It's right next to a bus stop, they look like prisons, it stinks, and had some of these issues, many of them are referring to either illegal operations or operations that actually had done nothing wrong. It was a matter of looking at what the county had done to zone that in the first place and maybe not considering some of the variety that had been there, which again, this is what I've been saying for the last six months, if I can say I told you so, but I won't because we're working through it. And the fact is, when we heard about all these complaints, and you've probably seen it on TV, that we would fill these, the council chambers with these concerned citizen groups, when it came down to, there were four producer/processors that had been complained against, and they were all in and around rural cluster developments that were in rural areas. Again, those operators did nothing wrong to the code that had been created. And it was just, at that point, it's, we had a little bit of a timeout, you know, with the county to figure out what was going on and what needed to be done differently. Since then, we've had this kind of information being shared among lots of county officials to stop any overreactionary regulations and helping us understand that when we do these kind of count, code and ordinance changes, it is affecting operators that do eventually go out of business. And again, every strike against legalization is a support for the black market. So in the case of Verde Vante, there were no reports at that point, but I do know from financial numbers that it's, they're not operating very strongly at this point, considering that they were one of the first operational, open operating tier three operators within Snohomish County.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
I'm sorry, just one more thing. Two, I want to make sure that you guys got the notice from Alan that you're invited to come out to see a grow operation this Saturday from 10 to 1. It's east of Lake Stephens, and it is a tier one facility that would be equivalent to what we would allow in the city right now. So you can go out and see for yourself what it smells like, what it looks like, what kind of security systems are in, in play.
Thank you.
I have one more question. With regard to employment numbers, so tier three production facility, how many people would generally work at a facility that size?
So that's a great question, because we talk a lot about that within the industry. And again, when we go back to the different kind of facilities, as we see here, and the variety of operations, these are very different, very different operations with definitely very different business models. There are, you know, when we do very large levels of investment, when you automate, or when you do a lot of things that you wouldn't require a lot of hands-on, you trade the economic multipliers and the economic benefit from one for the other. I have higher investment coming into my community versus higher employment rates for ones that might do more hands-touching, you know, we do top-shelf trimming, so everything's got to be hand-trimmed. Obviously, I'm going to have in a larger grow operation with much more flower coming through, a lot more people on staff, opposed to the same operation, size operation, yet it's, I'm doing an electronic trimmer and I don't have those, you know, 10 to 12 trimmers on, on staff. Now, again, and, and those numbers are coming out because we have been in business for a while. Those are pretty high-paying rural jobs and salaries, actually, even within the, the city areas. They average between, just for a hand-trimmer, would average between $15 and $20 an hour. Now imagine, it's just not, when we talk about employment numbers, it's not just about the actual, the physical, you know, full-time staff that would be involved, because they're constantly turning over different products and different, for grow operations, we're using different types of methods, that we have lots of fluidity within the market, as well as all of the support and ancillary businesses that have been created. Just to put this into, again, a larger perspective of what we're talking about and the impact that we have here, over 8,000 businesses have applied for a business license using the words cannabis or marijuana with Department of Revenue since 2012. Now imagine the thousands that didn't use the words marijuana or cannabis when they went to apply for a business license. So the, the employment numbers there are phenomenal, just at the opportunity to be able to support this business, as well as big, major global brands are networking with the industry right now to figure out how to support and what kinds of channels of revenue and, and new product innovations that they can create to help support the revenue. You would be amazed at the, at the multinational interest in this. And they are looking to build expansion offices here to support the new legalization effort. So the economic indicator, or the economic multipliers for this are phenomenal. And Colorado, thank you, Commissioner Tisdale, for bringing this up, are very indicative of the opportunity that we have as a city. And it's the largest city in this county and the, one of the most important, the most important counties in the legalization movement in Washington State is Pierce County, King County, and Snohomish County. And Pierce County has banned, King County has heavily restricted, because they lack the land space. We were the last ones open for business. And the city of Everett has been very restrictive. Six of our 13 cities are still under some sort of a ban. We need, we need these cities to open up. We have to get this going, or we are directly going to be supporting the black market. So, thank you.
Okay, now is our opportunity to hear from those of you who would like to come up to the podium and speak. I have two people who have signed up. If you would like to speak, the, these half-sheets are available over on the table, and please write your name legibly, because the first person, I'm not quite sure what your last name is. So our first speaker tonight is Philip Doughty, I believe? Oh, excellent. Okay.
Great.
And in general, our speakers are allowed about three minutes.
Hi, I'm Philip Doughty. I'm a lobbyist. I do a lot of work in Olympia with the legislature, and I've worked with about a dozen local governments now on different ordinances around 502 and medical. And what I wanted to do is give you kind of an update on what's going on in the legislature, because I think it's going to feed into what you guys are going to be dealing with over the next few months. Right now, the medical marijuana bill by Senator Rivers passed out of Senate Ways and Means yesterday evening on, I don't, don't know what the votes were yet, I didn't see the sheets on it today, but that's a very good sign. That bill will get out of the Senate, since Senator Rivers is the majority floor whip. I doubt her own bill would get killed. So there is going to be some kind of medical marijuana regulation coming. It will be under the Liquor Board. It will look a lot like 502. Whether there'll be medical-only stores or some kind of hybrid medical recreation situations, a little, little early to tell right now. That will come in rulemaking from the Liquor Board. Separately, there's another bill, 1461, that is, the main sponsor is Chris Hurst, and since it's in a Chris Hurst chaired committee, it will probably pass out of that committee. And it is called the 502 Fix Bill, and it's the one making adjustments to various things about 502. Probably the two biggest pieces of it that are relevant for you guys are, there are proposals in the bill to adjust the thousand-foot buffers, but it would make it a local option, meaning you don't have to do it, you could expand them if you wanted to, the distances, or you could go with, you know, the option to cut them down to, and there's two proposals in the bill right now, so I won't try to tell you which one's going to survive. But it will, it's, they're really doing a lot of work to respect different communities and give them options to deal with local concerns. This bill will also, fingers crossed, have a local tax split of the excise taxes in it. Right now, it would be 10% of the retail excise tax that's generated by somebody in your community, and it would be 20% of the excise tax generated by a producer or processor in your community. For a tier three, you could be looking at, for each tier three, you could be looking at about somewhere in the ballpark of a half-million dollars going right to the local government for each one. You know, I drove around a little bit this afternoon on the north end of town, and you guys have got an impressive warehouse district up there in the old marine areas along the river that, you know, just to me, as somebody who works in the industry and also owns a piece of a production facility down by Olympia, I like those buildings up there. Those would be great, tier ones, twos, and tier threes. They're away from neighborhoods, they're away from everything, basically, and there's a really good power grid up there from, you know, the historical marine uses up there. So I hope that's a direction you guys go in at some point. There's always a lot of concern about impacts, and so far, there haven't been a ton of impacts around the around the state. I don't know of a single recreational shop that's been robbed or broken into. I only know of one production facility that's been broken into, and that was in South Seattle. And I don't even know how the guy got in there. They, I believe the police caught the guy, though, and he was definitely on cameras. They had all sorts of shots of this fellow. I don't know of anybody who's been fined by the Clean Air Board yet over odor stuff, and there are a bunch of production facilities in Seattle that are close to residential areas, so if it was going to happen, it would have happened. So, if people run their facilities properly, you're not going to have that impact. And one other thing I wanted to address, I, I know that part of, I don't know if it was part of your deliberations when this interim regulations were put together, but I know there was a lot of concern with the mayor and city council here over the federal-state conflict. And I can tell you that there was a real landmark thing that happened last week. The Securities and Exchange Commission has, for the last about year, been refusing to approve anybody's stock offerings that were cannabis-related, not real estate cannabis, but really producing marijuana. Last week, they approved the first one. It's a company out of California, and it's for a project in, a medical marijuana project in Nevada, and they approved it. So, something is changing very dramatically on the federal level. The president just hasn't come out and said it yet. Thanks.
Our next speaker that's signed up is Alan Poehl.
Alan Poehl, I'm a, been a citizen of Everett now for close to 30 years. Live here, work and rent for the Federal Aviation Administration for my day job. I spoke in this room before the city council a few weeks ago, and I won't reiterate most of what I said there, but there are a number of us who are quite concerned about the legalization and proliferation and, of, of the shops and the grow operations here in our community. And we would really like to tell you, we don't think that overall, it's going to be in our best interest. It's going to be economically in the best interests of a lot of business concerns whom you've heard from tonight, you'll continue to hear from, but most of the citizens in this community that I've spoken with have not been in favor. There was a lot of comment made at the last meeting about the 58 versus 42%, and what I've heard from a lot of people who were part of the 58% is if they had their druthers again, seeing what's going on now, they would be voting the other way, and that's something you need to consider. Again, I won't reiterate most of what I said, but, but I am a little bit concerned that the city of Everett did not do as some other municipalities done and, and put a ban on it, and now Everett has basically become the repository for these type of operations. And it's not really too late, I don't think, to try to put the brakes on this and try to reverse the trend. That would be our preference. And much has been said about the economics, and what I mentioned at the last meeting, I'd like to reiterate here very briefly, is the city, there was a city councilman from Marysville who was also a businessman, who had brought up some people from out of state as business investors to bring a lot of money in to invest in some business land up north of Arlington, and he took them on a courtesy tour of the area and took them to downtown Seattle. And when they saw the openness and, and, and use of marijuana in the city of Seattle, they were not at all impressed. So, whatever is said about economics of this issue, you might win a battle. I think in long-term, you're going to lose the war. You have issues with property values, as was, has been discussed in these very chambers off and on. I was here one time when the property owner down on Rucker, who's impacted by the operation down there, spoke up. And those, those are also things that has to consider. And, and I would, I would just like to say in closing, we're, we're really not looking for the lowest common denominator. We're looking for something that's going to make Everett a nice place to live, and, and most of us, as common, ordinary citizens who work for a living and, and so forth, who are, don't have a direct monetary involvement in this, would, as, as nicely as I can say it, respectfully as I can say it, we would prefer to have these things pinched off and done away with. Thank you very much.
So, I don't have any other completed sheets of people who would like to speak. I did see one hand in the audience, so if you would like to, you could approach the podium there, and if you wouldn't mind filling out the form after you speak. So, if you would, if you would give us your name as well as your address, please.
Sure. Eugene Alfrank, 4218 Rucker Avenue. It was actually 57.1% of the population of the city of Everett didn't vote for marijuana. As far as, I heard people asking about crime statistics, and actually, in Colorado, since the legalization of marijuana, violent crime has went down 14% because of legalization of cannabis and removing it from the black market. And those stats are available on the Colorado State website, anybody can look those up. And as far as the openness of marijuana, regardless of whether someone buys it from the trunk of someone's car, a licensed recreational store, or they grow it in their own basement, the law is still the law. You cannot consume it out in public, in a public place, regardless of where you purchased the product from. It is still illegal to walk down the street and smoke a joint. So, there won't, it's not like, if the city of Everett allows a tier-two or a tier-three processor, you're going to have a bunch of people walking down the sidewalk taking bong rips. I mean, it's just not going to happen. I mean, the average age of the customer in my store is 50 years old. Because of the taxes on cannabis, the cost of it is pretty expensive, you know? The average kid or anyone over, under the age of 21 with a minimum wage job can't afford it, right? So, my average customer age is a working professional, age 50. I mean, I have 10 employees in my store, they're W-2, and they went from a minimum wage job to a $15-an-hour, $20-an-hour job, and even one of my employees was able to move to a nicer part of the city because they earned more money. I mean, the marijuana industry is bringing money for everyone, not just the owner of the store or the manager of the store. I mean, it's creating real jobs for real people with real families. Thank you.
And we have another speaker.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for hearing this. My name is Sean Wagen cellar. I'm up in Arlington in unincorporated Snohomish County. I'm a producer-processor applicant. And one thing that I think you folks need to understand is all of the rigorous background checks that we had to go through to even apply for a marijuana producer-processor license. We had to have, be fingerprinted and run through FBI background checks. We had to submit three years of every single bank statement, every single investment statement, be able to prove where our money came from, and, and prove that we are taxpaying citizens. There was, there was lots and lots of background checks. And so, the people that are coming into this industry are viable, law-abiding citizens that vote, and, and we're good people. We want to follow the laws, we want to pay our taxes, we want to bring this industry from a unregulated, untaxed, no ID check, growing in the basement, not sure what kind of pesticide use, into, into a viable industry. And I just took a tour down around the Boeing Field in South Everett, and again, there's, there's beautiful properties there that would, nobody would know what's going on in those properties if, if we were allowed to grow in those properties and, and produce and process. They're very well-suited for this industry, and they wouldn't bother anybody. So, we have so much regulation and have had to go through so many hoops to get where we are right now, that just simply by allowing business to do business is the best chance that we have against a market that doesn't check IDs, that doesn't have any overregulation. I mean, we, we really, Snohomish County is one of the largest counties of producing underground marijuana in the entire nation, and so cities and counties need to, need to provide a pathway for this legal business to come to fruition, because it's not going away. Thank you.
You can give that to the clerk. Another speaker? Yes.
Hi, my name is Alex Hendrickson. I live here in the city of Everett as well, and-
Would you give us your actual address, please?
Oh, sure. Yeah, it's 1423 108th Street Southwest. And I wanted to respond to what the gentleman said. I don't have a financial stake in any marijuana business of any kind, and I am not a person who uses that particular product. I support 502 implementation. I did vote for it, and I now care to make sure that it's implemented well, because I have a daughter in this community who attends public schools, because I want to see the black market done away with, because I want to make sure that it's sold behind doors with guards who check IDs and not at her school. And I think that on top of that, it's a social justice issue and an economic issue. I think we should be making money off of this product, rather than spending money trying to pretend that it's not there or trying to make it go away. I care very much about the city of Everett. I've lived here for 13 years. I intend to live here forevermore, and I want to make sure that we do this smart and that we make, give 502 a chance to work, and that we get a chance to get the legal market out of our city and out of our county. So, thank you.
And we have another speaker.
Hi, my name is Brian Bodge. I live at 3415 230th Street Southwest in Breyer, and I own the, the license at 3223 Pine Street, and wanted to let you know, give you a little bit of background on myself. I've lived in the state of Washington all my life. I've got three children. I'm a graduate of the University of Washington with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I have a professional engineer's license. I also work on a certification of capacity for the FAA as well, and would like to support the city's efforts to expand and the I-502 regulations and the boundaries in the C-2ES zone. I think that the city's on the right side of history on the subject. I think that prohibition has been a dismal failure, and would also like to let the city know that I am available for any questions they may have. Thank you.
So, anybody else care to speak to the planning commission tonight? I see one more individual.
Hi, I'm Jessica Jordan, and I have, or I'm hoping to soon have a business at 9506 19th Avenue Southeast, and I would be one of the five retail owners, and I, my store, that I have building permits to start building, getting ready to do that, and I'm located across the street from two churches. And across from, it's a four-lane highway with a turning lane in between, and I just want to let you guys know that we don't sell to minors. We don't want to harm children. This, there are, no one can see product through our windows. We don't have, you know, giant pot leaves around, you know, we're not, we, we want people to be responsible. We want parents to stand up and take the responsibility for their children as well and educate them on this. You know, I think there hasn't been a lot of talk of that. It's that everyone else needs to protect the children and not the actual parents. They need to talk to their kids and educate them. Some of the citizen comments, you know, they're saying that they talk to people and everyone's against this. Everywhere I go, people come to me and talk to me about this, and they're very professional people, and I've been surprised at the support that I've had in the city of Everett. My family's lived in the city of Everett for three generations. We're business owners. We are members of the country club. We are, you know, we're here, we're here to stay, and I, I just, there are no other locations right now with the restrictions that the state has put on us. I think those were, you know, fairly well-thought-out, and they didn't include churches for a reason. And again, I also want to say that I support allowing the marijuana in the ES zoning. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else care to speak tonight? I think there's one more person. You can fill the form out later.
Thank you. My name is Caitlin Ryan, and we are an applicant, tier-three producer-processor. I live in Muckatillo, as do most of our board members. A few do live here in Everett. We are all parents of young children. I have two that are still going to be moving into kindergarten, two outside of, who have gone past kindergarten. And for us, this revenue is really important, particularly addressing things like all-day kindergarten. So, as a parent, I'd like to speak to that first. I agree with the other speaker. I'm excited about the opportunity for my kids to grow up in a place where there are protections, other than somebody's car in the parking lot in their high school, in order to get marijuana. I also look forward to the funding that 502 will bring to things like education, particularly all-day kindergarten, for the two children I have left to reach that point. As a tier-three producer-processor, we've lost valuable months desperately trying to find a location that is close to home. We tried very hard in unincorporated Snohomish County. We went up all to the north end of Snohomish and all the way as far east as we could go, and we had, we were not able to find a spot that would fit a tier-three producer-processor due to the regulations that, that were in front of us, and we've now had to go to eastern Washington, which means for us personally, that's quite a lot of travel on the weekends and during the weeks, and that splits up a couple of our families while we're getting started. We would like to see our hard work going to the cities in which we live, and, and the funding that we can provide to the services that we utilize with our families here. Just wanted to speak up in support of thoughtful, careful, business-friendly regulation here in Everett as well. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else care to address the planning commission at this time? All right, seeing none, then I guess I'll turn to my fellow commissioners. So, this is a workshop, and it will be continued to March 10th, but between now and then, in looking at the memorandum from, from staff. On the second page, towards the bottom, are the six questions, potential issues to address in the regulations, and I suggest that maybe that's a good place for us to focus, sort of going through those six items and seeing if we have opinions on that that we would like to, or questions that we would like to pass on to staff as they work on the regulations. So, the first, should we just take these in order, or, okay? So, the first question is, should tier-one and tier-two production facilities be allowed in the city of Everett?
Tier-two and tier-
Or, excuse me, tier-two and tier-three production facilities be allowed? Any comments on that from the commissioners?
I would like to have data on employment numbers, job density, and potential excise tax income to the city of Everett, should the legislation actually be passed in Olympia for those two levels of operations. And I think you've showed us in the past, Alan, a map of where, if we considered that under our current interim regs, where those businesses could be located. That would, that would maybe be helpful in the ongoing discussion. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments on point number one? Okay. Commissioner Sosin?
Again, with respect to job numbers and densities, also, if, if there's any way to get salary and benefit information for those, so we know if those are family wage jobs, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jordison?
I'm going to be looking at a, is it a tier-one facility on Saturday? And, you know, I'd be loathe to make any statements until I've had all the, the benefit of all the information, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit, I'm reluctant to kind of show my hand, you know, at this point.
Okay. And Commissioner Otisdo?
The-
The designation 123, that's just the size of the operation. Did I understand that correct?
That's correct.
So what goes on in the regulations by the state? So it's a small business, a medium business, and a big business? Is that-
The sizes are actually stated in that memo there under that question.
Oh, okay.
So a Tier One-
Gotcha.
And not more than 2,000 square feet. 2,000 to 10,000 for a Tier Two, and 10,000 to 30,000 square feet of plant canopy allowed under a Tier Three.
And when you talk about plant canopy, is this a 2,000 to 10,000 square foot building? Or is it a larger building than that that then would have a 2,000 to 10,000 square foot plant canopy?
The latter.
Commissioner Sosin?
Technical question. I don't know if anybody knows it, but is plant canopy inclusive of seeded starts, things that aren't actually green or blooming? Or is it any planted material in any stage?
I will have to get back to you on that. I do not know.
Okay, thanks.
Collect them first, okay. I think what we would like to do, Ms. Curtis Smith has a lot of information on this subject, and maybe when we're done with the questions, I'll have her step up and answer those that she's able to.
I guess one question that I have regarding this issue number one, in terms of the square foot size of the plant canopy, but then thinking about the building, the structures themselves. And I appreciated the slideshow that showed various configurations and foot, building footprints. But in thinking of, of trying to understand this facility, would it typically be just a one-story building? I thought that's what mostly was showed there, but that would be sort of a question of what the footprint would be for, for the Tier Two and Tier Threes in particular.
That's a good question. I would expect that it wouldn't be limited to probably single-story buildings. Most industrial buildings nowadays are limited to one floor, but certainly you could have different production uses and different size of buildings or floor plans or layouts. There's, to my knowledge, no regulation under the State Liquor Control Board that would limit it to just a single story.
Okay. So should we move on to issue number two? Issue number two is, should production and/or processing facilities be allowed nearer than 1,000 feet to residential zones? Any commissioners have comments on how staff should address that?
I'm going to be looking for something that exceeds the idea that, you know, if somebody just doesn't like the idea that it's there, you know, so something beyond, like, it's there, and I know it's there, and I don't like it very much, you know, I don't want that. So I'm going to be, there has to be some sort of demonstrated impact or harm that takes place that is, I think that if there was any, you know, I don't doubt that a lot of people feel threatened on some level, but if there was any actual threat to anybody's home or their family or their children, I think we would be the first ones to say, no, this shouldn't be allowed. So that's kind of where, that's kind of what, I think that's the acid test, you know, is there any demonstrated harm? You know, and it has to be more than, well, gee, I don't really like that. It's just the notion that it's, it's there and it bothers me, you know? So, I mean, I can appreciate that. There's things I don't like, you know, that, you know, they opened one of these adult places right next door to where I take my family for ice cream, you know? And I didn't like it. You know, it's, it's one of these places where they have, you know, mannequins dressed in lingerie, and it's, you know, I had to explain to a seven-year-old why it's there, you know, and what it is and why people think they need it. And, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to say something about it. I wanted to talk, you know, complain about it, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, it's a legal business, you know? So, as far as harm, you know, I was only harmed to the extent that I, I was bothered by it, but, you know, there wasn't, I could go down and shake my fist and, you know, at, at the business and, you know, but that wouldn't do any good. So, I think that the, the real test is what measurable harm is there? And is there actually any threat that exceeds just the, the idea that I feel threatened by the notion of there being, you know, what used to be an illicit drug there, which is no longer illicit? So those are, that's, that's where it really gets down to. Okay, really, what, what is the problem? You know, I was in that neighborhood, I lived in that neighborhood on Rucker, you know, three blocks south of that, that store that caused all the fuss, you know? And I would say that if you, if you lived, if you, if you rented or purchased a house on Rucker, north of Evergreen and south of the downtown, and you didn't know that there were going to be businesses there, and that, you know, the businesses, it's there among, that you've got a tattoo parlor and a, and a, and a massage clinic and a psychic fortune teller, and they're all there. So, you know, it, how inappropriate is it? Okay, it's there, and you, you lived there for the last 30 or 40 years. You knew, if you lived there and you didn't know there were going to be businesses around you, then you would have to either be really oblivious or just in denial. So, you know, I had the benefit of, you know, we lived sort of back from Evergreen, and there was a hill that shielded us from that traffic, but that world from, from the business district of Evergreen and Rucker, you go a block east or west, and you're in a very residential neighborhood. But that, but that thoroughfare, which has been there for a long time, has had a long history of roadside businesses. So, that would be kind of the, you know, that's what I'm looking for, is that people could say, yeah, this is really a problem, you know? And it's a, it's a problem with, you know, the police, if the police department was here and said, this is a problem, you know? I'm sure that we would be, you know, we would be willing to take that into consideration, so.
Thank you.
I think your comments actually are anticipating issue number five, which is talking about retail uses. So number two was focusing on the production and the processing facilities.
Yeah, I jumped, I jumped the gun on that. Sorry about that.
Which is fine, you know, just sort of thinking of the scale of the operation. And what, what we've heard tonight from staff presentation is that the city council has come up recently with some new regulations that would, I thought prohibit with the alleys. The alleys is the backing up to these potential retail stores. So there's some new regulations that I think are fine-tuning and, and trying to address compatibility with residential areas. One of the things that I'm concerned about in terms of the compatibility for the retail, so jumping to number five as long as we're talking about that, are the, the parking spots for people who are going to go into the retail establishment, making sure that there's adequate parking and that it's not a nuisance for residential neighbors. Would be something that I would be thinking we should be addressing with the regulations. So, since we're sort of combining two and five, any other comments about either the thousand-foot separation from residential zones for the production or processing facilities and, or the protecting residential areas from retail?
Commissioner Sosin?
Thank you. My comment about changing or considering changing thousand-foot residential setbacks would be to wait and see what comes out of the legislature and, and factor that into our thinking. It sounds like it could be within this legislative session and maybe in time to give us more That pertains to item number two, more than five, I think, although it is a protection for residential uses or stores near residential zones. I would like to add a thought to number five, based on our early experience of our first few retail stores. I think we need to add some protective language to how these retail shops look on our street. The very first operation that opened and then closed immediately up on North Broadway was, in my opinion, very substandard and did not elevate the, the retail atmosphere in that block whatsoever. So, to the extent that we can require a quality type of siding, signage, window screening, as opposed to what I saw, which was at first, I think, spray paint and then a very poorly-applied kind of a silver, viewless kind of material, it really looked shabby. And I would like to add that to the considerations as we go forward. And we haven't talked about the appearance of these, of these retail operations yet. Thanks.
Other comments, questions from the commissioner?
Alan, on number two, what, so this is a, I mean, my old door manufacturing facility, it's, it's, this is a production facility. Are we, are we treating it consistent at the thousand feet? Would I be able to locate that facility today within 1,000 feet of a residential area?
Door manufacturing or manufacturing?
Or just any commercial facility? I mean, were we being consistent with the regulations, or is this, is this somewhat different?
This is a little more restrictive than what our ordinances would otherwise allow or require for an industrial use. If you have an industrial zone less than 1,000 feet from residential, which is not uncommon, we have a number of areas in the city where that interface occurs, and you are not restricted to a separation of 1,000 feet for most industrial uses. There are, you know, maybe some different standards as far as buffering from residential use, but not that kind of a separation requirement.
And this 1,000 feet is, is by the WAC. Is that correct?
No, this is actually from the city's local option regulations that are more restrictive.
Did I hear earlier, get a license, so they have to be 1,000 feet away from churches and, or schools and recreational?
Certain sensitive land uses, but that does not include residentially zoned property, unless it happens to be, you know, one of the other uses. Churches are not included on that list either.
So, is the commissioner ready to move on to number three? This is an issue related to potential fencing in the floodplains. Should production and processing uses continue to be allowed in the A1 agricultural zone?
Were you suggesting that it, it could create flooding problems? Or was that, was I not understanding what you were describing there?
Yeah. The issue there is, first of all, most of our A1 zoning is in the floodplain, and so buildings would not be allowed. If you had an outdoor production operation, the Liquor Control Board requires the installation of an eight-foot fence. In flood situations, those act as a great way to collect debris that's floating down a stream in a flood. By catching that debris, it creates dam effect and can, you know, do, create more flooding as a result of obstructions that are placed in the floodway. And so that's the only reason for asking this question, from flooding impacts, not necessarily any other type of 502 impacts.
The fence would create the problem.
If it were, yeah, it could. If you, if you had something that was trapping logs and debris that does catch on, on structures, even the, gosh, even some of the poplar farms used to act as kind of trash racks that would catch everything in a flood and, and in some cases, create higher flood elevations upstream from those types of incidents.
So the dilemma is, if you had a, an oper, you couldn't have a building, and if you had an outdoor grow operation or some, maybe something with greenhouses or something, they would still have to have this fencing around it as, that would be a, so it's kind of, the fence creates a problem which prevents you from having the, the production facility? It's kind of a, you can't have one without the other? Is that the issue?
It's probably not going to be an issue very frequently, but when we do have floods, and we do, probably every five or 10 years, you'll see a, you know, good flood out in the valley there in our ag zones. And if you had a fence that was catching all the debris that's washed down, that does create the opportunity for, you know, further flood damage by creating a dam effect. And so, that's the only reason we asked the question, because the, in the outdoor production operations, an eight-foot fence is required.
The fence would be the problem, which would prevent you from having the, so the fence requirement creates the problem?
That's correct.
Commissioner Sosin?
Thank you. Can I clarify by asking if the soils in the ag zone are stable enough to support greenhouses? And if, if they are, is a greenhouse a building? Or is it still an outdoor operation that would require a fence?
Greenhouse would not be allowed. It's a structure, structure is not allowed in the floodplain.
Okay. So if it were hoop house and, and that type of an operation, like we grow tomatoes, that would still require the fence?
I, I don't, I'm not sure I understood the term that you used there about-
A hoop house is a temporary structure that can be taken up and down seasonally with, they usually look like a little quonset hut, but they're generally sheeted with Mylar, not Mylar, plastic sheeting.
And typically, our floodplain regulations wouldn't allow for even a temporary structure in the floodplain.
Okay, great. That clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams?
I don't know what our code says about eight-foot-high fences, but I know in some zoning codes, an eight-foot-high fence is considered a structure in and of itself and wouldn't be allowed in the ag zone anyways. So are we kind of dealing with a problem here where, even if we say it's allowed, it's really not allowed because we couldn't get a permit to build a fence for the property?
Well, in our ag zone, I do not believe the fence site restrictions apply that we have in residential zones. And so, an eight-foot fence would be permitted. I do believe I've, that's why we've asked the question, because actually our code does allow for the taller fences.
Okay. And so a farmer right now, assuming all that, would be able to build an eight-foot-high fence anyways in ag land for a horse, for example? Or their own crops?
Yes, that, that is a, not, would not be considered a type of structure that's prohibited. We do have, you know, a lot of fences in the ag zones.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on the production and processing uses in the A1 zone? Okay. The next item, number four, should retail uses be allowed in the C-2ES? So this is the Everett Station Zone, and we had heard some testimony tonight from Brian Bodge about the, and that we have a map in our packet of the proposed retail site that has Liquor Control Board license but is not allowed under our current regulations locally. Any comments on, on this?
This almost appears to have been just an oversight, or was it deliberate, Alan?
I don't believe it was deliberate. When we talked about these regulations, we didn't specifically talk about prohibiting or permitting retail stores in the C-2ES zone. So it was probably not something that we had a- So, it was probably not something that we had any deliberations about.
Okay. And I wasn't suggesting that anyone was derelict and overlooking it, but it didn't appear that that location was terribly sensitive, although there are some old houses down around there, aren't there still? But?
Very few.
Yeah. Okay.
Commissioner Sosin?
Thank you. I would like to voice a concern about this, allowing these uses in this zone, given that we are studying where we are going to put our residential density in the next horizon of our comp plan update. We are relying on this particular area to be mixed-use and transit-oriented development. And I think we have a consensus, or are trying to discuss a consensus, about focusing residential growth in this area close to sustainable and green transportation modes. So, what happens in this planning horizon if we are allowing retail uses that have a restriction from residential areas?
Act very much like the existing retail zones, for example, Evergreen Way, where we also have transit-oriented development around the Swift BRT stations. Those zones do allow for retail uses and retail marijuana, you know, provided that they meet the more restrictive regulations Council recently amended. And so, while you can have retail uses in these zones, with the restrictions that Council has added, it makes it tougher to locate within close proximity to residential use. So, as residential develops in any of those zones, it will be harder and harder for a use to locate there. Now, assuming we have the five that are authorized in the city, if we had five retail locations, probably wouldn't see any more coming in unless the Liquor Control Board increased the number of stores that were permitted. So, it's probably not going to be much of an issue in the near future.
Would, if this location were actually licensed by the city to open a location there, would it preempt any residential development taking place anywhere within the C2ES zone within 1,000 feet of it?
This regulation would not, no, it would, right now, housing is not allowed in the Everett Station Zone, except under some limited circumstances. That's likely the change in the very near future here.
Right.
And if the retail establishment were established first, it wouldn't preclude the sighting of a house next door, although the inverse would be true under the city's recently amended retail regulations. The retail store couldn't come in next door to a house.
Okay, great. Thank you. That answers my question.
Alan, like Fastenal's down there, is that retail?
Commercial.
I mean, it seems there's a couple of retail uses and maybe that's before the zoning and so it addresses what?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with whether or not they have a retail component of that establishment there. If they do, then, you know, it's a permitted use to have retail, retail hardware or building materials, something like that. Sure, that's an allowed use in the C2 zoning, C2ES zoning.
But the C2EZ?
C2ES zoning, yes, that does allow for the retail use.
Okay. Thank you.
The last two items, we sort of already talked a little bit about regulations for retail uses that are adequate to protect residential uses. And I'm sure we're interested in compatibility. And I'm sure staff is going to be bringing regulations forward. And it sounds as though the City Council has already been addressing some of those items. And then, the last issue is, are there other issues that the city needs to consider to assure adequate protection of the public health, safety, and welfare? Anything that the Planning Commission wants to add for staff to research? Commissioner Sosin?
Me again. Do we currently have the right or exercise the option to determine what operating hours are for marijuana retail establishments, recreational marijuana retail establishments?
That's a good question. I do believe the Liquor Control Board has some regulations. Whether or not we can be more restrictive, I'll have to research.
Okay, great. I'd like to put that on for going forward. And then, the only other item that we, it has been brought up by public comment, mostly in our printed materials that Kathy has supplied us, but many people requested that we add churches as a sensitive use. I'm not saying that I particularly agree or disagree about that at this point, but I'd be interested to know what other jurisdictions have done to include churches as a sensitive use and include them in those lists of other uses that we don't allow the zoning to be less than 1,000 feet from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Commissioner Jordanson?
I don't think, honestly, although I did vote in favor of the having interim use, interim regulations, I don't think we've, my opinion is we haven't really done City Council a favor. And I don't, we've kind of had a concern that we were sort of opening the door for the kind of strife that we've seen sort of play out in front of City Council. And we've kind of left it out on the table. And I don't feel that going, continuing interim regulations is really in the best interest. I think it's going to continue on to have the advocates and the opponents, you know, voicing their opinions. And I honestly feel that whatever we do, we need to, it seems like we were being prudent because we're kind of waiting, taking sort of a wait-and-see attitude. Let's get some more information in, let's see how things play out. And I think we have sort of been waiting for something that's maybe not going to, I tend to think that most of the information that we're going to see is here and that there's not going to be a whole lot more, there's not going to be a whole lot, there's not going to be a whole lot more revelations on this. And I feel that if we continue on the path of interim regulations, where we're kind of doing the antithesis of leadership and sort of staying, perpetuating this ambivalence about this thing. So, that's been a concern of mine. It was a concern of mine when we voted in favor of the interim regulations. I felt that we were being prudent, but at the same time, I had some concern that the factions would come out and start having it out in front of City Council, and that's exactly what has happened. So, I'm in favor of sort of solidifying and making the regulations permanent. So, I don't really want to string it out anymore. I think we've strung it out quite a bit, way more than we've needed to. But having not experienced with this previously, I think it's understandable that we want to proceed with caution. And that's just, that's my opinion.
Commissioner Adams?
I just want to voice concern, not concern, support for Commissioner Sosin's comment with regard to signage and the appearance part of it. One of the things that concerns me about the proposed location at Pine is more the fact that the freeway runs next to it and I wouldn't want to see the same signs that have gone up at other locations go up there. So, from my perspective, I'd love to see more information from city staff around what we can do on that side of things to make sure that, you know, where the uses are allowed, that it looks appropriate and we've done what we can from a signage and appearance perspective. So, thank you.
I liked what Michelle said as well about the, I don't know that I want to say get into the design standards, but it'd be interesting to hear from Mrs. Curtis Smith about, it appears that maybe the appearance of those places are, there's some limitation as to who they can rent from and because the landlord, you know, there was the banking issue and then the landlord issue. If the feds ever decided to come down, then, you know, you could lose your property, it could be seized. But I think that something with, on the retail side, with some sort of design standards, I'm on six, but things that might, that would be something, it would be nice to see what they've done in Colorado or, you know, maybe what their own industry has. And maybe it will evolve because as the folks spoke in favor of this, you know, it's an industry, it's got profits in it, they want it to be a good industry, they've got kids and they want to be proud of their business like any other business. So, I'm certainly not saying that I would be in favor of over-regulating the design standards, but I think as was talked about earlier, some of what I have seen, not just in Everett, but what I've seen are, I don't know that we would want those types of locations on the retail side.
Okay. Well, my understanding is that we will essentially continue the public workshop on this topic on March 10th.
If I could ask, I think we were going to have Ms. Curtis Smith answer a couple of questions that may have come up that I couldn't answer.
Okay. All right.
The list is extensive, how much time do we have? Try to keep it just quick. Do you want me just to do one, two, three, four, how we did? Okay, great. And if I may also, if I could defer to a few more other experts on specific topics that we have in the crowd. If I misquote some of the LCB actual requirements, don't have them quite memorized yet, but the people going through the process certainly do. So, kind of tap me or yell at me if I misspeak, please. Okay. Issue number one, lifting tier two and three. Commissioner Sosin will definitely get you and the Commission some more of the job numbers and definitely the economic impact, tax revenue projections. We have many different scenarios as they're going through Olympia right now of what are the ideas. I think by far, though, the most that we've seen is that connection to, you have to have operations in your city or in your local municipality to actually get any of the tax revenue. So, we need to, we need to make that clear as well. Let's see, tier clarification. Okay, what we've seen so far, especially out of the 29 producer-processers in Snohomish County, none of them are growing in facilities that are equated to the maximum size of their tier structure. So, that means in a tier three at 30,000 square feet, of course, the LCB isn't allowing us a canopy of 30,000 square feet right now, but there are no 30,000 square feet buildings out of the 29. It doesn't mean that that won't happen in the future, but right now, what typically is happening are multiple, in Snohomish County, and this is in all zones, not just rural, but in some of the rural industrial and the industrial areas of Snohomish County, that they are growing in, let's say, a tier two, which could grow up to 10,000 square feet, might have a 6,000-square-foot warehouse. And then, they do, some of the canopy within that warehouse will equate to no more than the maximum that they're allowed to grow. So, there is no real standard. I know some of the concerns have been more in the rural areas or closer to residential that we're going to have big Walmarts coming in next door to us and it's just, that has not manifest at this point. As well as, there was another question about can you have multiple stories? And yes, I mean, like we showed before, the facilities, the facade and the infrastructure is almost irrelevant to the actual ability to produce and process in any configuration. Most producer-processers eventually will get to the maximum space. Where in the city of Everett, you're paying per square foot, it's expensive. Many of them are going to have smaller square footage than what they're ultimately allowed to have and maximize the inside space. So, it is not uncommon in the city of Seattle right now to see multiple very large tier three stacking to utilize that infrastructure as well as having multiple floors. I might have, you know, grow on the first floor, but I'm processing on the second. Or I might have my flowering room up there, you know, down on the bottom, but I'm doing clones upstairs. So, again, it's total canopy is the green space in your facility. One of the things that we need to think about, too, with the separation ideas and making sure that we don't restrict from clustering, being able to cluster, is that we could have larger facilities and have multiple tiers located within one facility. For example, if we had a 30,000-square-foot facility, we could have, whatever that equates to, 10 tier ones in an industrial area, sharing that space. It could happen with appropriate code amendments. And one-story cluster development, multiple tiers, yes. And then, the idea also of processing only. Not everybody has a producer and processor license. There are several applicants who have only a producer license and only a processor license, and we are allowed to, you know, do that. So, we need to think about what that would look like. Did I catch all of the tier one, church? Oh, that's coming up on another separation of retail. The second issue was lessening the 1,000-foot separation. And that, again, is not a liquor control requirement board, requirement, LCB requirement for residential. That was something that was imposed by Everett City Council. So, we do have a 1,000-square-foot buffer rural with the Liquor Control Board right now in sensitive spaces like schools and arcades and that. But again, churches is not included, nor is residential, that was something. And I do believe, I had attended a few council meetings where they also extended, we're thinking about sensitive use lands as well, more concerned about the ag area, but if the outdoors taken off the board, then that would alleviate some of those concerns. Philip?
Hi, Philip Doughty again. Just on the 502 side, I believe there's only one city that's added churches as a special buffer, and that was Bellevue. And that was ordered, in order to deal with, there's, look, there's a lot of Latter Day Saint wardhouses in Bellevue. They've got a temple there, too. There was going to be a culture clash that nobody wanted. Most of the big types of churches that are around the state end up becoming a buffer because they usually would have a licensed daycare or sometimes an accredited school inside them, so by default, they get covered. The churches that, you know, are only open on like Wednesday evenings and a few hours on Sunday, that becomes a bit different. I know in eastern Washington, I think Ellensburg also has restrictions around churches, I just can't remember what they are. But they have been, they've been incorporated into different community stuff and I don't think anybody's legally challenged it, and I think it would probably stand up in court, would be my guess.
I'd just like to add, the federal government is the one that started the 1,000-foot and they only want 1,000-foot from schools and daycares.
Sure.
I'm sorry, schools and playgrounds.
Sure. If you'd ever come up to the microphone so we can get it on the record.
So, if you'd like to speak, we need to get it on the microphone.
Okay, yeah, so, yes, the repeat of that is that the 1,000-square-foot buffer had been initiated by the federal government with concern to children's access. And the idea with that was for schools and playgrounds, thank you. And as Mr. Doughty had mentioned, that then, of course, restricts already so much of the church availability for the established churches. If we got in, let's just go into that for, actually, there were a few more concerns, I think, on tier one, but let's combine tier two, or the issue two and issue five together because it sounds like that's kind of what commissioners were doing about this compatibility and the church issue. One of the things that I think before decisions are made, and I would love to bring this information back, is let's just get a count of how many churches are in here and what are we talking about, especially in the zones that are available both for retail and production and processing right now. And it could be a separation of, if it's a concern for just retail, that might be, that would differently opposed to, is that a concern also then for production and processing? So, I'd be happy to bring that data back. Because my gut feel is, if we include churches with any separation, that takes out 502 completely in the city, as well as we would also need to probably define church. And that might get a little challenging, but again, just things to consider and I'd be happy to provide more information about that. Okay, so, issue, I'm sorry, I should, did I address issue one and two? Let's keep talking about five, okay. Commissioner Sosin, this takes it right into now maybe five and six, the other issues with the, how do the shops look and the compatibility of the area? There is extensive- There is extensive liquor control board requirements about signage, they're very restrictive already in their signage, we're not going to have billboards, we're not going to have, in fact, Jessica, I think you just went through this, can you remember the dimensions?
Sixteen hundred square inches.
1600 square inches is the total availability of signage that we have, and we can have how many signs? One, sorry, thank you.
Hi, Philip Doughty again. This thing has gone through multiple interpretations with the liquor board on how they're treating it. You could probably set up whatever signage restrictions you wanted locally, as long as you didn't disallow signs altogether, because then there would be free speech issues and that sort of thing. What the liquor board is allowing right now, and this probably is going to get revisited with the new board members who just came on, the 1600 square inch restriction applies to anything that has the business's logo or name on it, but they're allowed to put up extra banners that say recreational 21 plus, and those, some of those banners in Seattle have gotten kind of big, not gigantic, but big enough to be recognizable when you're driving by. I don't know how parents feel about that, I don't have a guess at this point, but you could probably, through design standards and signage restrictions, you could address that, just as long as there's some signage allowance.
And I do recall a council meeting a few months ago that actually went pretty extensively into design redesign, when we were talking about the implementation of the hotels, I believe, what you could see from the freeway. So I think there already are pretty extensive design standards on our code books right now. So, and then the idea of screening and blackout, liquor control board requires, you cannot look into a storefront window and see what's in there. So there is going to be, you know, restrictions that way as well. And again, I can list out all the other specifics, they are quite extensive with that for sign. Other than design standards for what a facility should, or a building should look like, I think that maybe we just need to look at the, what's on the books right now with other, how do we keep all of our, you know, Everett City Commercial District upgrading? And I, I think that's a good conversation, not necessarily to exclude retailers, but to look at that from the city perspective of how we can gentrify and put pressure maybe on a lot of landlords who have issues with that in our downtown, or in our Everett area. Okay, let's see, delay to move intera, okay. Would conflict, okay, signage, and I believe it was Commissioner Tisdell talking about maybe some of the landlord issues, banking issues, and how, how, what's happening there with some of our producer processors and retailers. I will definitely get you some of the background information to support what's happening currently in the market, as well as in comparison to what could be happening like Colorado. Did I address two, let's see, two, five, and six? Did I hit everybody's issue? Okay. To issue three, the ag zone, I think it's pretty clear from looking at our allowable maps, and I think it was in your commission package, I know, you can probably see it visibly right here, the only allowed area in the ag 10 is the green, and that is all floodplain. I, again, I think Alan has addressed the fence issue pretty adequately, only the other restriction is that for an outdoor grow, it's not just an eight foot fence, it's also a screened outdoor fence, or eight foot outdoor fence, so that might just be something to consider while you're looking at the outdoor options. And yes, Commissioner Sosin, a hoop house would require a fence, so unless it's a permanent structured greenhouse, like the glass greenhouse or something, not, Sean, did you want to?
And just keep in mind that a 30,000 square foot canopy grow, which is the largest that can happen, is only 0.65 percent, 0.65 of an acre. So most of the ag land is 10, 20, 30, 50 acres, so we're only talking 0.65 of an acre for the very largest.
Okay, and then I think the last issue on the table was retail allowed at the C2ES. Obviously, I have pretty strong opinions about that, I'll try to set that aside about yes, I think that would be lovely, but I understand too that we do have bigger comp plan visions. I'm hoping by the time the comp plan vision does impact our downtown, and we do get some more density cluster happening in our, our city, which is imperative for the survivability of our county, that the acceptance of this industry would be very mainstream and actually very welcomed as maybe an anchor tenant someday in these rural cluster new developments. So, did I hit them all?
I believe so.
Okay, if not, I definitely get a call to me through Alan, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So, do we need to make a motion to close the public workshop, or?
No, this isn't like a hearing where you would have to either close it or continue it. My only question for you is if March 10th is something that'll work on your calendars if you're willing to hold a, an extra meeting in March, and I don't need to know that tonight, you can get back to me during the course of the week so we can schedule that and put that notice out.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so I think we're ready to move on to item two on our agenda tonight. This is a public workshop on the Trinity Lutheran Church Student Housing. And we do have memo that, from our planning staff, about this item.
Alan Giffen, Planning Department, and most of what I put in my memo, I'm going to cover again in the PowerPoint here quickly. I've also got a presentation from Coz Development and Trinity Lutheran College who are in attendance tonight, so we'll have them follow with a PowerPoint when I'm done, I've just got about four, I think, three more slides. Ordinance 3380-14, established a pilot project in downtown, and the planning commission was instrumental in that about a year ago, when this first came through the process, to allow for the establishment of student housing at the southwest corner of Californian Oaks. And the reason for the pilot project was to allow the off-street parking to occur off-site in a separate structure, a parking structure owned by Trinity Lutheran College, which is across the street from their campus on Wetmore and California. And so this was the location that was approved for approximately 100 rooms of student housing. That transaction apparently was unsuccessful between buyer and seller, and so now Coz Development, Trinity Lutheran are proposing a site a little bit to the north of the parking garage, about a block and a half north of the site for which the housing that is proposed on the 2600 block of Rockefeller, they would still like to provide all of their off-street parking in the parking garage on California. And so that would require an amendment to the ordinance, the pilot project ordinance, and so what the, what is proposed is a, not only a new location, a smaller building, 56 rooms rather than about 100, same parking location, but there's also a parking management plan that has been submitted, I believe that we emailed that to the commissioners on Friday. I've quickly skimmed it, our traffic engineering division is going to be also reviewing that to provide some comments to us about their opinion of the viability of, of that location as opposed to the previous location, a little bit further of a, a walk and also across a busy arterial Everett Avenue, and so we'll get some comments back from traffic engineering. But what we want to do tonight is just hear from any questions that the commission may have, or the public comments about the proposed change in locations. So we do have a little bit of information in the staff memo, we've identified those portions of the ordinance that we think need to be addressed, possibly revised in some cases, perhaps not in others. We would like to just hear what comments, questions you might have, so that we can bring back better information for a decision. Hopefully, again, we're probably looking at the March 10th meeting for the subsequent public hearing on this item. So if there's any additional information you want from staff or from Coz or Trinity, tonight would be a good time to pass that along to us, and give us any further direction that you have prior to the March 10th meeting, or if March 10th doesn't work, at another meeting probably in March, we might have to add it on to one of our regular usual meeting dates. So I believe that's all I have, unless you have questions for me. If you do, happy to answer those and turn it over to Coz or Trinity after that.
Anybody have questions right now? Commissioner Sosin?
I do. Alan, this new location is still located within the B3 zone?
That is correct.
Okay. And I guess that's my question, thank you.
Any other questions?
Alan, on the project description, you're talking about a 58 room, but then it says 119 beds.
And that's, you know, what the...
So it's a little bit different configuration of the building?
I believe so, I don't have...
The last building was...
Yeah, I don't have building plans, I'll ask Coz and Trinity to address that and how that differs from the previous proposal.
Just by memory, the last time it was like one bed rooms and... And help me understand the, the concern with Everett Avenue?
As a pedestrian path between where the students live and where they park their cars, that means they'd have to walk across Everett Avenue, which is a busier street than any of the streets that were located between the previous housing location, the parking and the campus. So it's just a matter of slightly longer walk and with a, having to cross a busier arterial street.
And how is that different than Everett Community College and going, they're, they're just not going back and forth to housing, is that, is that what's, is the student population goes back and forth across Broadway, correct?
Students who, yeah, I don't want to mix this up too much with, with the community college situation, there's, you know, the housing at Everett Community College is a little bit different situation than the parking on the east side and...
Gotcha, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so unless you have any questions, I'll turn this over to Coz and ask them to talk a little bit about their proposal.
Hello again, John Reed, President, Trinity Lutheran College. Thank you, first of all, for hearing our plight as we try to find suitable housing for our students. We're pleased that we have this opportunity to share with you again what we're up to. Tonight, just briefly, we just want to share with you an update of this new project, how we think it best fits our needs, talk a little bit about the parking, and then Kathy will talk a little bit about the nuances of the program. Again, just want to reassure the planning commission of our commitment to Everett, we love our new home, we came in 2008 and have grown substantially in our student enrollment and continue to believe this is the spot that we should be, and, and hopefully you see the good news of our students in your community on a regular basis, and, and we're proud of that. We are just completing a 2020 strategic plan and hope to have over 500 students at the college, and, and the, one of the key variables for our growth and our future is student housing. We're pleased that when we came to the community, we found suitable housing across from the library here in the, in town, and, and it was older housing, and while our students have done well in that area, we know that in order to grow the college and meet the demands of college students in this day, we need, we need to continue to improve housing, so this is an important part of our strategic plan. A couple things about this location and about the project that we're excited about, previous project, which that location that we mentioned earlier is no longer available to us, the part of it was the way that we had our college foundation considering buying the commercial property there, but also the value, the asking price for that property went over, up over a couple hundred thousand dollars from the time we originally went after that. So that, that site is off the table for us, and as we looked at a new location, this continues to be a place that it seems to be well-suited for our students. We currently, the, the second green dot is the, the parking garage, and we currently provide the Y across the street, all of our students use the YMCA currently with their tuition as part of their fitness, and so we're crossing into that area. We're having discussions now with Central Lutheran Church, which is the next building towards Hewitt, both for classrooms and for an early childhood education location, so you could see a little bit where some of our footprint and the way we might see our college moving is toward this location of housing. We have talked a little bit about the, crossing the avenue, we cross Hewitt Avenue now with our current housing, and so our students have to navigate that as well, and, and we did bring to the engineers a concern about how long the, the button is when you try to cross the time, that, you know, making sure our students stay patient, but we're, we're aware of, of that. One of the aspects of the new project is that this, this housing project that's before you is, would be owned and operated by the college, where the previous one was an outside investor, and we would take a master lease. Because this is a smaller project, we have already begun the process with local lenders, and we have some letters of intent. Coz has been the developer of this the whole, the whole time, and we have a great partnership, they've already submitted drawings for the pre-application with the city. To answer some of your questions, the previous, the units in the previous project were about 190 square feet in, in dimension, and these are about 100 square feet more, and we have more flexibility, so 58 units with more flexibility for the college to grow into the 119 residence We, we, probably the biggest thing that we wanted to address tonight was to talk a little bit about the parking situation, but we're pleased that we're, we're currently not in this project compared to the previous one, we had to displace the tenants that were located in the, in the commercial buildings during the construction, and, and that's not the case, we've had really good cooperation with the local church that's right in between the parking lot in terms of providing us with temporary parking. So let me talk a little bit about that. Currently, students that come to the college when they register for classes, they have to register their cars, but we, they also have to pay to be in the parking garage, and one of the dimensions to the new parking plan would be anybody in student housing would be allowed to have free parking at the college, and so we would, we would see that as being a strong motivator for our students, but they have to register and there is a permitting process. We would have probably a couple different types of parking permits to be able to distinguish between those students that are in, in housing and have vehicles, and those that are on commuter type situation and, and our parking. We have, but we have currently 350 slots available in the parking garage and the ability to expand that to 400, that's the capacity of parking, but some of it's taken up currently with the rooftop garden. We have organizations, companies that have leases in our parking garage, but all of those leases are on a one-year rolling situation, and we'd have the ability to adjust that as we needed it. But currently, you know, it comes and goes, but we fill up, up about half of the building now on a regular basis. In your packet, we give you some information about our current housing, the current, excuse me, the current use of our, of the parking from our students and what we project that to be, and I think the number comes to something like, in those projections, something like 16 more students in parking than we currently have as we grow the college. We have worked with the church, one of the concerns was where do we have drop-off and, and kind of short-term parking, and the church has agreed with us and with Coz to be able to provide that on a regular basis. We are a bit concerned, we currently have a safety escort program for our students, but we're planning to expand that and have more opportunities for our students to provide or receive that service to get down to that location. I might also mention, we've already put into the plan for this, we, our current parking garage is not automated, and it would be as part of this project, so the students would not have to have a tenant to, to kind of manage that facility. Finally, we currently let our first-year students bring their vehicles to, to the college, and in this parking plan, we would not allow that, and that would kind of help regulate... and in this parking plan, we would not allow that, and that would kind of help regulate I don't know if you have any questions, other questions about the college's approach to this or our parking plan. Kathy, have some other?
So I just, well, first of all, thank you for having us here yet again. I just wanted to walk through some of the information that was in the Transport Group report that looked at the traffic implications, the parking implications, and transportation. And this report is still in draft. We are waiting for Michael Brick's comments on that report, but we hope to get it final here in the next couple of days. So just a couple of things to note in the report. It was noted that there was no noticeable impact to traffic. One of the things that was highlighted in the report that I wanted to make sure was brought to your attention was just the behavior as it relates to those students who bring their cars to campus and when they use their cars. And they use their cars for more casual use rather than ongoing use. And so we would envision that these students would bring their car, park it in the garage, and then literally only take it out of the parking facility if they were leaving the immediate walking area. So overall, little impact to traffic. As John mentioned, there is more than adequate space in the garage. If you were to eliminate the freshmen and extrapolate the percentage of students that currently bring their vehicles, you're talking about approximately 14 vehicles. So nominal impact, assuming our current statistics. If you look at the services that they're close to compared to their existing student housing, they're clearly closer to retail services along that Everett Avenue street, all of the fast food restaurants. Not to stereotype students, but I have a college student, and fast food would be his food of choice, and this is nicely located near the fast food restaurants right there on Everett Avenue. It is, as identified by Transport Group, well-served by transit. They've put a nice map in there so you can see the transit lines that this proposed facility is near. And then in addition to that, one of the things that the college has talked about because of their commitment to providing a safe and ADA route, we have mapped out a route from the parking garage to the student housing and are committed to providing ADA-compliant crosswalks in that route. And that route right there, as you cross Everett, is already signaled there is a crosswalk there, but would commit to improving that crosswalk for ADA purposes. Alan's gone through the proposal discussion. Obviously, the primary change is the address of the proposed location, and then, of course, the size of the building, the number of beds. And I did want to share just the anticipated timeline. As you all know, based on previous discussions, the timeline is really driven by a fall opening date, and Trinity starts in the fall in August. And so we really have backed into a timeline relative to this project. So to get it open by August of 2016, it requires us to be out of the ground by no later than the end of July 2015 to get this building up, built, and fully operational for the school for their fall term. So we are on a tight timeline, and just wanted to share that with you, just such that if there was anything we could do here at the Planning Commission and/or Council to get through, that would be fabulous. So... Any questions?
Any questions?
What's your... Is it... What's the level of confidence on this project versus the last version of it?
High.
High?
It's high. And let me tell you the reasons why. Several. First of all, Trinity's going to own the facility, so we don't have to identify an outside investor. It's a less complicated transaction. We don't have a commercial building that we have to try and find a buyer for as well as the parking lot. It's one parking lot. It's a simple transaction, a much simpler structure. We have gotten pre-approval for Trinity to obtain financing. So honestly, the only thing, in my opinion, that would stop this transaction and this building from being built would be this commission or the council.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adams?
So there's no parking off-street proposed under this plan, right, at this location?
That's correct.
Okay. And the other one, there, I believe there were 15 or 25 spaces under, on the first floor, is that right?
There were 20
Okay, so I...
On the existing parking lot, exactly. So we would have eliminated, I think, approximately nine existing spaces to build that building.
So this, I have a question with regard to, and this may be a question for Mr. Reed. The other structure, the other apartment building that's used by the college is located, I think, at Everett Avenue in Hoyt. Are those students currently parking in the garage and making the walk? Or I have concerns with the on-street parking. If I'm a student showing up at Sunday night getting ready for Monday class, I'm not parking in the garage. I'm parking on the street. And maybe I move my car in the morning, but...
Currently, we have about 35 to 40 of our students in college housing have vehicles parking in the parking garage. One of the changes is currently we're not doing our own citations and doing parking violations with our current parking plan, which we plan to do in the future. And our facility management folks will be doing that along with a resident director that's in that building. And a couple tickets, students lose the right to have their car. So I mean, I think that it might take a little bit of time, but we've discussed this a little bit with engineers and understand that we have the jurisdiction to do that with our own ability to provide some kind of feedback to poor parkers. And so that's one way we manage that.
So right now, you're not writing current tickets at the Everett... Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Yes.
Thank you, Chair Stewart. My questions are about how this building physically is different from the building before. I understand that there are fewer rooms, but can you clarify for me, please, how the structure will be different than what was proposed before? And what steps you have taken to do a reverse design should the building ever need to be converted to market-rate housing? Thank you.
Sure. I'd be happy to do that. So the building is different in obviously that it's smaller. So the parking lot that the building on is approximately half the size of the prior parking lot. So a smaller structure. The rooms themselves are actually larger. And so as John mentioned, the prior rooms were, on average, 197 square feet. These rooms are, on average, near 300 square feet, so bigger rooms within themselves. Within their own right, you could almost call them a studio apartment, albeit a small studio apartment. So you would take away some of that conversion risk. What you would need to do is put a stove top in them to convert them at this point. This facility also has lofted rooms, and so it has rooms that have a mezzanine in them, and the beds are actually up in the mezzanines. And then the downstairs area for that particular room is the living area and kitchenette and bathroom. Again, very easily converted into a studio apartment and very similar to the studio apartments that we designed for market-rate housing.
So these would be double occupancy rooms, not single?
They could be double occupancy rooms, yes.
That's how you achieve the 119 beds?
That's how you achieve the 119 beds.
Okay, thank you.
I just might mention that we are still doing our own kind of plan for what exactly each room would be, but I think currently we have about eight studio rooms for singles, and the rest would be doubles, triples, and quads with the way we have it configured.
I was just... I was going to clarify. So as you get up to the lofted floors, there are a couple of lofted rooms that are larger. So when I'm talking about the, you know, just below 300, that's an average number. There are some of the rooms that are even larger than that. So we've got some where we've got three and potentially four beds up in the mezzanine area with the living space below.
So how many stories would the structure be approximately?
You were going to ask that. We've just signed so many buildings. It's six. It's, yes, five over one.
And in terms of across the street, are those single-family residential homes across the street?
Yes, Alan Giffen. There are quite a few older, single-family homes across the street. Some of them have been modified, chopped up a little bit into rental housing, but the zoning across the street is actually our four, our four, our five. So it's zoned for very high density on the east side of the street.
And have you had any meetings with the neighborhood in the area?
We're actually currently in the process of scheduling the meeting with the neighborhood group. We've exchanged emails to try and get a date that fits onto everyone's calendars with the hope that we could get that done sooner than later. Based on the emails I read today, they've got a pretty full agenda next week, which then would push us out till March. So we've asked for a special meeting.
Any other questions or comments? And is there anybody in the public who would like to speak to this item? I see one person, Victor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Victor Harris, 3017 Lombard Avenue, beautiful downtown Everett, Washington. I'm having trouble visualizing this property, but I think my question really goes to Mr. Giffen. Doesn't this intrude on the parameters of the downtown plan of the Broadway plan of restricting high-level, multi-level buildings that are intruding on residential neighborhoods? And Madam Chair, I think that kind of goes to your question a few minutes ago, was I think this kind of steps outside the bounds of those plans and those ordinances. Thank you.
Would you like a response?
Sure.
Alan Giffen, Planning Department. The property is discussed earlier, is Zone B3. The building height allowed in that area is 80 feet, and so the building would have to comply with those height limits.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments on this item? I see another person.
I'm Becky Hepker. I'm a member of Everett United Church of Christ, and we're selling them the parking lot. And we're looking forward to having the students in the neighborhood. We're expecting, not really expecting to grow our own congregation from them, but we're expecting to have them be good neighbors. And some of us are actually frankly not too happy to look out on two parking lots. We think this will be a benefit to the neighborhood as well as to us selling the property to them. We have done a letter of intent on the off-street parking for the unloading and unloading and for the construction period. And we're looking forward to finalizing the details on those. And I just want to say, my husband and I have a 160-square-foot apartment, studio apartment in Sacramento when we go down there to visit, and I spent six months living in that. And it has no dishwasher, but it does have a freestanding range and refrigerator. It's cozy, but it's very, very livable. And when I looked at the plans for what they're planning to build there, I was ready to move in. You know, it's actually looking really good. So we think it's going to be a good project in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? And if you wouldn't mind saying your name and your address for the record, please?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Christian Page. I'm currently a resident of the Trinity Apartments. I'm the student government president. I just wanted to say what, you know, new housing would mean to us as students. We sit in a situation where we genuinely love Everett. And I'm speaking on behalf of all students. There's more students here with us. And we genuinely just love being here. We're volunteers in the churches. We are, you know, people who are contributing to local businesses. We are, I mean, students who are mentoring other younger students. I mean, since I've been in Everett, I've been here for four years, and I've met the most amazing 12-year-olds that I've ever met in my life. And we just love the opportunity to be a part of something that's still growing. What new housing would mean to us is, you know, just a space where we can be even deeper in the community that's growing, being closer to the YMCA, where a lot of our students are, you know, volunteering for the Minority Achievers Program, who do self-esteem courses. I mean, just all around the board. We just love being involved in the community. And what new housing would mean to us is just giving us a comfortable place where we can be a further impact. And not only for our current student body that's here, but in the plans of growing to reach 500 students by the time of 2020. I mean, that just brings more leaders and more positive impact to the community. So I think this would be something great for us. Thank you.
Anybody else care to comment on this tonight? Okay. Thanks, everyone. So moving on to our item number three then. This is a public workshop on proposed amendment to the land division ordinance related to encroachments and gaps.
Alan Giffen, Planning Department. And this is something that we asked you to initiate on January 21st. And at that time, we said we'd like to also consider or have the ability to bring back potentially changes to other sections of the subdivision ordinance that relate to the subject, encroachments and gaps. And in consideration of the requested change, since the January 21st meeting, we have talked back and forth between Public Works Planning and the Legal Department, and actually do support the change as requested by Mr. Williams to just remove the reference to the boundary line adjustment procedure in that section on encroachments and gaps, which means that instead of having to resolve the encroachment before we can approve a boundary line adjustment, that we have more flexibility to approve something that may not resolve every encroachment, but certainly can improve conditions. And that's frequently what we encounter with so many older properties in Everett, where the fences or the building locations may encroach upon a property line or over a property line. And it was probably an oversight to include BLA, Boundary Line Adjustment, in this part of the code when it was rewritten about a dozen years ago. So what we would like to do is bring this forward with the proposed action, again, perhaps on the March 10th date, so that we can make this amendment or pass it on to the city council. There may still be some other things that relate to this that we'll bring back at another time, but at this point, this is something we think needs to be resolved sooner rather than trying to bunch it with some other potential amendments that would require a bit more discussion. This one's pretty simple.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Adams?
Real quick. So essentially, by taking this out, I assume it takes the staff out of the position of having to make a legal conclusion of when a boundary line adjustment would be made. And that's the purpose of the flexibility, is really taking that burden off of the city.
Well, it takes the burden off the city, takes the burden off of property owners to get somebody who may not really have an interest in the boundary line being adjusted having to participate as an applicant because we have to have all encroachments resolved. And as the graphics that my quick sketches on the third page and some of the explanations of how those currently work will demonstrate is that, you know, there are people that may have absolutely no interest in what property owner on lots three and four might want to do, but if it means the guy on lot one has to sign off on it, it just makes it very complicated for... complicated for people to resolve things that should be pretty simple if they're in agreement, if, at least the parties that are impacted. And this doesn't create any new holes for us. I think this just gives us more flexibility and simply, or simplifies the boundary line adjustment process.
Thank you. I think this is a good change. I like it.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Alan, what are, do we still have boundary line adjustment language on the books for other situations? We are not doing away with that entirely. And compound question, what would those situations look like? I understand clearly the example that was drawn up and that walked us through it. That was really excellent, and I thank you for that. But what happens with just simple boundary line adjustments? Are they affected?
No, we have a whole chapter, subsection in the, not a chapter, but a subsection in the land division ordinance on boundary line adjustments. It doesn't affect that, all the criteria that must be met currently would still have to be met in order for us to approve a boundary line adjustment. Did I answer both parts of that question?
Yes, I think. It would be the case of lot one in, if it didn't have an encroachment onto lot two. If lot one owner decided they wanted to do a boundary line adjustment to clear up that where the fence created a gap, that would be a simple process done by one property owner, not affecting anybody else. Is that correct? Disregard the accessory building. That's not there. Just a simple boundary line adjustment.
Usually, there's two property owners involved with the boundary line adjustment. But if we had a lower number than one, if we had lot zero to the left of lot one there for that particular example between the fence and the lot line, there would still be two property owners involved there, but it wouldn't involve the accessory building on lot two if they wanted to clear up that gap in the fence on the other side.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comments on this item? Okay. So I think we are ready to move this to the March 10th meeting, it sounds like.
Right, we'll be, we would like to, yes, make a recommendation on March 10th to approve this as proposed. So we'll schedule a public hearing then, assuming that March 10th works for the majority of the commission.
I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners, do you folks know offhand your schedule for March 10th? If we have a quorum for that night? I know that I'm available.
I should be available.
I'm available.
I will be here on the 10th, but not the 3rd.
Okay, sounds like we have a quorum. Commissioner Tista?
Yes, 10th is good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. All right, it sounds like we know what our agenda is. All three of these items will be.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.